This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the City of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9.
This meeting of the Eau Claire City Council will come to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation, on the ground, withers all, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Emmanuel.
Here.
Kincaid.
Here.
Klinkhammer.
Here.
Mitchell.
Here.
Strobel.
Here.
T. Walt.
Von Hayden.
Here.
Weld.
Here.
Worthman. Jeong. Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and welcome everyone to the Monday, January 8, 2018 session of the Eau Claire City Council. Hard to believe 2018 is right before us. We do welcome citizens who are joining us tonight. Monday nights are the night that the city council holds public hearings and sometimes public discussions and listens to presentations in which we seek your input and your ideas about events that are happening in our city and sometimes help us make decisions at our legislative session, which convenes in this room tomorrow afternoon at 4:00. Unlike the Plan Commission, the city council holds its public hearings on one night and deliberates and takes action on the next night. Tonight, we are hearing quite a bit of hearing about zoning changes and land use changes in our city, but we do end the evening with a presentation on the executive summary of the Sustainability Advisory Committee's report regarding the Paris Climate Agreement. And we do look forward to reviewing that report with anyone who's in the audience and absorbing the information ourselves. Briefly, I'll review the protocol for people who want to address council. After I introduce the item, there is a staff report and then questions. City council may ask some questions and then I will invite the public to speak. You may approach the podium and begin by stating your name and your address and then speak about what is on your mind. We do allow five minutes of speaking for each person. We find that that is fair, keeps the meeting moving along, and it affords the last person the same amount of time as the first person. So, we found it to be a fair system. You don't have to speak for five minutes, but they are there for you should you need them. Sometimes we have questions after you're done talking, so if you linger at the podium, it helps me, gives me a minute just to ask if we have questions of you. And we all just want to understand what the point is that you're trying to make. Not that you don't say it clearly, but sometimes we have questions, so. It's like a dialogue, so. And lastly, if you do have something on your mind, but you don't want to speak, you're uncomfortable, you may write your comment on a blue piece of paper way at the back of the room. If you leave the comment back there, they will be picked up and distributed to council members prior to our meeting tomorrow afternoon, so we will be able to read exactly what it is that was on your mind. With that introduction, and oh, and if you have any problems during the meeting, you may ask Ms. Merle to help you, who is seated right up here. There are agendas on the back table also. So, let's get going with our meeting. We begin with a public hearing, number one, which is a hearing on an ordinance rezoning property on the north side of Westover Road, west of State, from R1 to R1P, and to adopt a general development plan. Mr. Tufti.
Thank you. This is the property. It's on the west side of State Street, north of Westover Road. Within the city, there's R1 property, and then the town of Washington has property surrounding the site. It's an aerial photo, then again showing the site and the existing single-family homes surrounding the site. This is the church further to the north. This is the general development plan for the property, Westover State Street. It proposes extending a private drive through the site for access to 15 single-family homes. All of the homes have reduced setbacks along that private drive. Five of these homes are on lots that are less than normal R1 district standard requirements. This is a condominium plat for the property. And also in your packet is an existing plat for the property that council recently approved, subdividing the property into seven lots for single-family development. This has not been recorded, this plat. There is a narrative that was provided by applicant explaining this project in your packet. The project is 15 lots for single-family homes with access to a proposed private drive. The lots have reduced setbacks from that private drive and some have reduced lot sizes. The comprehensive plan identifies the area as being appropriate for low-density residential development. The project at 15 dwelling units point on 3.6 acres is a project density of 4.2 dwelling units per acre. The property is surrounded by single-family development, both in the city and town, on lots that are generally larger than these lots. And the Plan Commission found the project is not compatible with the surrounding land uses, given the request does include lot size and setback reductions. And the criteria they considered in making that determination is in your report. In terms of the general development plan that's on your screen, each dwelling unit is shown with a double garage. 30-foot setbacks are provided from Westover and State Street. Your normal eight-foot side yard setback and 25-foot rear yard setbacks are also provided. The plan does, however, request three reductions in terms of R1 district standards, first being a 20-foot front yard setback along the private drive. 30-foot is the standard. The second, the private drive is in a 30-foot wide easement on a 24-foot wide private drive. Normally, we have a 60-foot public right-of-way and 28- to 32-foot wide streets. And then, reduced lot size are proposed for five of these lots. The minimum lot size requirement is 8,000 square feet. We did attach the provisions of City Code to review these types of developments. The following concerns were expressed by Plan Commission. The reduced front yard setback of 20 feet along that 30-foot wide easement for the 24-foot wide private drive leaves little room for parking, sidewalks, or other front yard improvements. Applicant's narrative actually states they will not provide a sidewalk, and this is not consistent with Section 1810-050S of the attached criteria. Sidewalks should be required for this project, however, there's no room for them to be built. Another concern noted by Plan Commission is that these homes are proposed to be about 70-foot across the street from each other. In a normal, single-family subdivision, homes are normally placed at about 120 feet across the street from each other. City Code also states that every lot shall normally front or abut on a public street, and this project proposes a private drive. There is only one other development in the city that we're aware of where private drive access is allowed for a single-family development. There are a number of multifamily projects, and those projects are reviewed with the following provisions. Private drives will be allowed on a case-by-case basis. Private drives will not be allowed as a substitute to public streets. Projects designed for multiple ownerships will not be developed with private drives, and setbacks from private drives will be the same as public streets, plus additional setbacks for sidewalks, boulevards, and snow removal needs. The Plan Commission believes this proposed private drive is a substitute for a public street because the property already has a final plat approved by city council with a public street access, although it's not been recorded. The project is designed for multiple ownership. Reduced setbacks are being requested, which does not leave room for sidewalks, parking, boulevard, and raises snow removal concerns. The Plan Commission did not allow a private drive for the situation. Five of these lots in the project are less than 8,000 square foot standard, which is the minimum standard of an R1 district. Again, we attach the provisions of City Code to review those types of situations. The project provides minimum or reduced setbacks, and the only common open space is defined by City Code as a 25-foot rear yard for most of the buildings. And the Plan Commission is concerned with allowing reduced lot sizes for a project, given the lack of common open space. The preliminary condominium plat for the project was not approved by the Plan Commission. We did attach a protest petition that we received in opposition to the request under state law that will require a three-fourths vote of the council to approve this project. There were other petitions that we received at the Plan Commission meeting, and we included those in your packet. The Plan Commission did not find compliance with the various provisions of City Code and has recommended denial of this application. Are there any questions?
Questions for Mr. Tufti. Councilmember Weld.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Tufti, the other development that allowed a private drive for the single-family lots, what was that?
It's the former Lowell Creek Elementary School down on Gulf.
Okay.
If you're familiar with that.
And as far as the road width there, though, is that?
I know it was slightly wider on the end because it's kind of a larger, bald cul-de-sac, I guess is the best way to describe it, but I don't know the exact road widths on that project.
Right. Thank you.
Are there questions for Mr. Tufti? I see none. Thank you. Are there members of the public who came to speak to this potential rezoning this evening? If there are, can...
Hi. John Panzagra. I'm part of the group that was looking at developing this. With the meeting that we had last Tuesday night, with last Tuesday, and the concern that the neighbors had, right now, we're going to table, pull the project until we can get to meet with them and deal with their concerns a little more. Still, I mean, we still feel it's a great site. It's a great place to be, but we're going to make it, hopefully, better for everybody.
Were you able to inform Mr. Tufti of that decision today? So, right now?
Actually, just made it before the meeting.
Okay. Because we published a public hearing, I will be opening up a public hearing, so we might be hearing what's on people's minds. Maybe that will help you. But, so, your statement is, Mr. Panzagra, that as of right now, you've withdrawn the project?
Right.
In its present form?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I don't mean, I mean, just thank you for speaking.[784.73][784.73](Laughter). Oh, as the chair stated, we have published that this is a public hearing, so if people would like to rise and speak, you're certainly welcome to do so.
Hi. My name's Angela Axelrod, and I live at 3391 Evergreen Lane. I live there with my husband and two children. We've been there since 2008. And I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of the vast majority of neighbors and homeowners on Evergreen Lane and the surrounding area, including Westover Road and neighbors on State Street. We have formal protest petitions, as well as a general opposition petition from over 50 neighbors who are either adjacent to the property or who are very near to the property. Although much of the opposition for this development comes from my heart. I'm a researcher by trade, and I believe in using objective data to make a point. And the fact is, this development is too dense for this neighborhood and goes against the city's own growth and land use plan. You'll note that about a year ago, this parcel was for sale, subdivided into seven single-family homes. Mr. Tufti put that up a minute ago, and you didn't hear a peep out of the neighborhood about that proposal, and you didn't see any of us here at a meeting opposing that plan. We are reasonable people, and we are not anti-growth. We recognize and appreciate that there's a need for housing and even condominium housing on the south side, but there are other ways to develop this property, such as that original plan with single-family homes that would cause less harm while still providing housing. I urge the city council to not only consider the Plan Commission's rejection of this zoning request, but to refer to that land use and growth document, because it's laid out very nicely there. This document indicates that rezoning to more intensive use can be considered if adequate safeguards are made to ensure that there is not an adverse impact in terms of excessive traffic, noise, light, inappropriate site planning, and excessive or unwarranted impact on the natural environment. And I took that wording straight from that land use document that's provided on your website. It will result, this plan will result in excessive traffic. The street already can be a bit of a challenge, that intersection of State Street and Westover. We're mostly concerned about the safety. There's a school bus stop at State and Westover. We have 25 children on Evergreen Lane alone. It's already, again, a challenge to make a turn there, and adding 20 to 30 more cars to that is not going to help matters any. Excessive noise and light, an excessive and unwarranted impact on natural environment. In order to squeeze all those 15 onto this parcel, you would have to cut down every tree. There's hardly any green space allowed in this property. Lots of concrete, which leaves lots of concerns about snow removal and drainage. And finally, the inappropriate site development, which is the reduced setbacks. They're not congruent with the surrounding neighborhood, and lot sizes that are much smaller and less than the current R1 zoning of 8,000 square feet. There's no green space included with the plan, and the developer was unable to address this concern at the Plan Commission meeting. The private driveway is a huge concern from the neighborhood about lack of parking for residents, as residents would not be allowed and their guests to park on that private driveway. And so, we assume that guests of those residents would be parking all up and down State Street or Westover Road. There are no sidewalks, which again brings up a safety concern, and the developer admitted that the plan for the private driveway is more characteristic of a multifamily development rather than from a single-family development. So, the plan meets none of these criteria. If the developers are concerned about their issue of profit, lot configurations that are consistent with the character of the neighborhood would likely still result in an appropriate return. I don't really need to go into a market analysis here, but the suggestion that this condo development is necessary to make a profit could be refuted. I'm going to speak from my heart a little bit now. Overwhelmingly, the neighborhood opposes this. There are many neighbors in the audience tonight. We're not usually attendees at city council meetings. When we went knocking on doors for signatures, we had talking points ready to go, but all we had to do was show them this plan, and people said, "Where do we sign?" People gave up their days off two days before Christmas to get their signatures notarized for the formal protest petition. As much as this whole process has disheartened me that somebody's trying to maximize every square inch of this parcel to make as much profit as possible, I have been also inspired at the way the neighborhoods come together. We're a neighborhood of people from all walks of life, and we care deeply about each other, our community, and our neighborhood. We have no problem expanding our neighborhood and would welcome smart, well-planned development that conforms to standard setbacks and lot sizes. Only a few individuals stand a benefit from this plan, and those are the developers themselves. And we respectfully urge the city council to reject this rezoning for this planned development. Thank you.
Three seconds left, even. Thank you, Ms. Axelrod. Councilmembers have questions? Probably not, given the turn of events, but thank you for the statement.
Thanks.
Anyone else here to speak to this rezoning request?
Hi. My name's Katie Oth, and my address is 3383 Evergreen Lane. I'm a mother to four children, all school age, and I'm primarily concerned with the safety of this plan, especially because of the increased traffic proposed this development could create, particularly on Westover Road. There doesn't appear to be a plan for a pedestrian sidewalk along Westover, and a significant portion of that road. And there's a bus stop on the corner of Westover and State, which Angela had mentioned, that my two children use as well as other students, and it's already dangerous because the students are standing on the road, and there's no sidewalk for them. So, increasing the traffic around that area would just make that a little bit even more dangerous. So, that's my primary concern, is just the safety. My other is just a personal issue in that we moved to the house, to Evergreen Lane, four years ago. We were a military family, and we moved quite a lot. When we moved to Eau Claire, we lived in the East Hill, and it was really lovely for a time, but then we had four kids, and we were just sort of outgrowing the space. And what attracted us to Evergreen was the bigger spaces inside and out. When we learned about the area, we knew that the house, or the land behind our house, in our kind of backyard, was zoned for a single-family home, and we were really putting careful thought into where we were moving, because we wanted this to be our last home that we bought. We wanted to put down some roots and have a solid place for our kids to grow up. So, that was okay, you know, moving to this area, knowing that it was going to still kind of remain open. There's lovely evergreen trees back there, and I'm not good at guesstimating height, but they're probably 75 feet to 100 feet tall, and I'm pretty sure with this proposed plan, they wouldn't be able to stay. I can't imagine how they could keep them. It's dubbed the Westover Woods Condominium Development, and I just don't think there would be a lot of woods left. So, I guess ultimately, it just feels like they're cramming too much into a small space, and I just, I don't, like Angela said, I don't feel like it's a good fit. And I just think that it's, there's too many detriments with all these allowances that are made for this development, that it's detrimental to the look and to the safety of our kids in our neighborhood. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Oss. Anyone else? Anyone else? So, just as a matter of explanation, the item will appear on our agenda tomorrow, because the agenda's already been published, but we will take appropriate action to respond to the developers' withdrawal of the project. That's how it'll play out, okay? Any other input? Seeing none, then the chair will close item one, bring our attention to item two, which is a public hearing on an ordinance rezoning property at 883 Grover Road, from TR1A to R1. Mr. Tufti.
This is the property on the south side of Grover Road, west of Tiffany Lane. The surrounding zoning is all R1, or, again, in the town of Washington. Again, an aerial photo of the property and showing the existing single-family homes surrounding the site. And this is the preliminary plat then for the project. It extends a public street into the site. It creates 15 lots for single-family development with a CSM for the large home that exists on the property. The comprehensive plan identifies this area as being appropriate for low-density residential development. The site has single-family homes on three sides, and then the creek to the south. The Plan Commission believes that this proposed rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan and will be compatible with surrounding development. All the lots do meet the design standards of an R1 district, and most of these lots are considered large lots based on city standards. The Plan Commission has recommended approval of this rezoning, and the Plan Commission approved this preliminary plat with the conditions noted in the report. Are there any questions?
Questions for Mr. Tufti? I see none. Thank you. Are there members of the public or the people who came to speak to this rezoning? Mr. Tufti is the developer here? Anyone here to speak to this project? Okay. Seeing none, the chair will close item two, bring our attention to our third public hearing of the evening, is an ordinance rezoning property on the southwest corner of Mount Washington Avenue and Menominee Street, also to R1 and 1A. A unique use we're looking at tonight.
This is the property at the corner of Menominee and Mount Washington Avenue. The P Public to the west is the Mount Washington Ski Jump, and most of the property around the site has R1 or R2 zoning. And there's an aerial photo showing there is an existing home on the property. This is the ski jump immediately to the west, and then there are mostly single-family homes around this site. This is the site plan for the ski jump facility. They are regrading and improving the 60-meter hill on the property. This is their existing clubhouse and small parking lot, and this then shows the proposed expansion of their parking lot next to the ski jump. The existing home would still remain. And finally, is a certified survey map, showing how they'd split the property into three lots, with the parking lot on Lot 1, the existing home on Lot 2, and they'd have room then for a new home on Lot 3. Again, there is a narrative provided by applicant explaining the request. Comprehensive plan identifies this site as being appropriate for low-density residential development with the park site to the west. The site has existing single-family homes to the north and east. The proposed R1 zoning of the site allows consideration of the parking lot by conditional use permit. The Plan Commission believes the proposed zoning for the property is consistent with the comprehensive plan and will be compatible with surrounding development. The report goes on and explains the parking lot, which was approved by the Plan Commission by conditional use permit. The Plan Commission is recommending approval of this rezoning, and again, the conditional use permit was approved with conditions that are noted in the report. Are there any questions?
Questions for Mr. Tufti? Is the entire Lot 1 a parking lot?
No.
Or just part?
This is all of what's there now. The north portion, Lot 1, will be mostly a parking lot. Existing home will still remain, and then there's room for one more lot. The ski jump has informally used portions of this area for many, many years for parking when they have big events there. They had an informal agreement with the former property owner to just kind of park on the snow or grass over the wintertime, so.
Okay. And it's compatible, the ski jump business is compatible with existing home, as far as we know?
It's interesting location in terms of its proximity to the ski jump. I know the past owner enjoyed that type of activity in their backyard. I know quite a few of the folks that are part of the ski jump activity live in this neighborhood. I know that also, so.
Okay. Well, that's a good report. Perhaps it'll just remain that way.
Yep.
Okay. Other questions? So, thank you. Is anyone here tonight to speak up or speak about the Washington Avenue project? Anyone here? Okay. The chair will close item three and bring us to our last public hearing of the evening is on an ordinance amending the zoning provisions for splitting of two-family residential lots, adding that a joint cross-access and maintenance agreement be recorded. Mr. Tufti.
Attached in your packet is the proposed amendment to the zoning code, which will require a joint cross-access and maintenance agreement be recorded with the land division for the splitting of a two-family residential lot or twin home. We also attached a draft outline of the items that we would administratively review within such an agreement. And then, we also attached the original memorandum to Plan Commission when they reviewed this back in November. It gives some background information on the work we did at that time. The purpose of having an agreement like this recorded with the land division for a twin home is to address access and maintenance issues which may come up with these properties having a shared property line, which runs right through the middle of the building. The responsibility of addressing these issues will be the property owners. The items that should be addressed are listed in that outline, which is in your packet, and we will provide copies of that to an applicant. The city and other utilities are of particular importance to be addressed to ensure they are properly accessed and maintained with these properties. We did find that many developers already do record a similar type of agreement with their twin homes. We actually attached an example of an agreement that Code uses. We actually attached an example of an agreement that Cody uses with the twin homes he's building within our community. This ordinance amendment is very similar to requirements for association bylaws presently being recorded with condominium plats, which is a requirement of state law. So we know how to administratively do this. And the Plan Commission has recommended approval.
Questions for Mr. Tufti? We're a silent group tonight. But thank you. Did anyone come this evening to speak about or for zoning code provisions for twin homes? Seeing none, then the chair will close item four. Our last item of the evening is a presentation, which will present the executive summary report of the Sustainability Advisory Committee regarding how the city is addressing objectives of the Paris Climate Agreement. The Sustainability Advisory Committee does so at the behest of the City Council, which resolved by what, was that a year ago? No, when did we? Sorry? Of last year? June of '17, that we would appreciate a report. And here it is before us.
The report, voila, right?
Mr. Noel.
Pleasure to be before you, City Council. The PowerPoint, can I move it?
It's right here.
Okay, great. So you asked the Sustainability Committee to bring this report back, and how is the city aligning with the goals of the Paris Accord? And so we'll go through that tonight, if I can move it forward. Okay. So this is the direction that you gave us as staff to work with the committee. And the committee, on December 19th last year, approved the report. And we will go through that tonight in terms of recommendations and how the city is comparing, and then where we fall short, how we can actually make up for that. So that was the second objective after comparing the city against Article 2 in the Paris Agreement. So some foundations, just to understand that this didn't come from just out of thin air. But our mission statement as a city is to have a sustainable community. So we're very rooted in focusing on what we can do for the environment, for human health, for the economy. All three tenants of sustainability. Natural Step Framework is a pledge by resolution in 2009 that you adopted, that you adopted this 25% renewable energy goal by 2025. You also enacted in the comprehensive plan, two sections, two chapters, on sustainability and health. That included specific policy statements looking at targets for greenhouse gas reductions and also climate action plans. So there's already policy that's in your comprehensive plan to talk about these things, to consider them. And then we've also achieved three municipal carbon footprints already, just with anticipation that these things may come before you in the future, like it is today. So with that, a little bit of foundation. And just lightly touch on the science. Now, the greenhouse gas effect is really, it's necessary for us to survive on Earth. We need it. It needs to be there to be able to have enough warmth for us to survive, right? So it's very critical from a natural point of view. We have a few gases that we're concerned about: carbon dioxide, methane, and nitrous oxide. Those are the primary greenhouse gases that we need to be concerned with. Now, as we've looked at growth over time, this thing keeps doing it, there we go. What the effect of humanity on this natural system with mainly burning fossil fuels, so coal, oil, diesel, gasoline. Embedded in those substances are greenhouse gases, much to do with carbon. And so as those are emitted through our tailpipes, through our smokestacks, you increase this amount of greenhouse gases, trapping more of the sun's radiation. That is a natural function to warm the planet. Thereafter, the planet warms more. So, you know, this, because it's a big globe, there's a lot going on with this type, even though the science is pretty straightforward. I like to think of it as in simple analogies. So we can think of this as we've been filling up the bathtub, so to speak, of carbon dioxide, of greenhouse gases. The faucet, the flow is too great than the actual normal drains. And this would be carbon sinks or oceans capturing that CO2. There's just too much coming into the tub, and we're having a point where we're overflowing. There's becoming a mess. So this is kind of a simple way to look at this condition that, you know, we need to stop this extra abundance of carbon dioxide. Well, some people ask, well, what, how big is the bathtub? And we can look at ice core samples from 800,000 years ago. These climatologists that climb mountains and drill these cores to see the trapped air bubbles of history, right? And so we can see over that time, this is 400,000 years, that we really, we followed a natural cycle with ice ages and warm-up periods. But as we've reached the Industrial Revolution, we really have exceeded that natural ebb and flow of how the Earth is designed. And so that is the cause for concern, that we've overflowed the bathtub, so to speak. So hopefully that might help a little bit in terms of having an analogy. And we can see, this is really a matter of energy, that we are increasing the heat content of our globe with more solar radiation being captured. And so there's profound effects on ocean and land and air. And as you've probably seen and read about in the paper and on news, with Arctic ice melting and ocean mass increasing with more evaporation means more extreme rainfall and flooding in various areas, whether it's on the coast or inland as well, glaciers melting in the Himalayas, so forth like that, more droughts and flooding. And all this is really important for humanity because we built our societies, our cities in the last 150 years, where we've really grown in population. And so these effects really play out on our cities today, and we need to be concerned about that. And a couple of different things in terms of loss of ice in the Arctic, you know, about two sizes of Texas that we've lost for that. You know, lower elevation countries with the flooding and poverty areas. And more locally, more vector-borne diseases that are spreading in our area with tick and Lyme disease. And then also, just looking at it from an economic point of view, some insurance companies are seeing by 2065 that some of the damage, oh, thank you, the damage will exceed the global domestic product. And so what that really has to do with the different outcomes of cities having destruction, where those costs need to be reimbursed by insurance companies, they are looking at this from a risk management point of view. So just a little background. One of the things we wanted to gauge, you authorized in the Sustainability Committee's work program, was a community survey on sustainability topics. And so this fit really nice with the executive summary. Ask our people, what do we think about these ideas, these goals? So economics, we asked, you know, community, what do you think, you know, if we do take action in these areas, do you think it's going to hurt the economy? The over, majority of folks said that, you know, positive, possibly strong effect or no impact. So that could mean new jobs in the clean energy economy, things like that. Willness to pay, we also asked that question, you know, this might mean a little more money, at least in the interim. Some of these technologies get more embraced, like solar. And so we found with, this is the most credible sample set, is our postcards. That was the randomized survey that we sent out versus the online media. And about a $16 per month increase, people had mentioned, which is about $200 a year. If you would boil that down to what that might look like on your energy bill for electricity, if one would subscribe to Excel Energy's wind source program, so wind, 100% renewable, that would cover your electric load at your house, 100% clean energy. So the willingness to pay there is, it's not extreme, but it's reasonable, about $16 a month, at least in terms of what the survey said. Funding for actions, we also asked, well, you know, this isn't, this sort of work isn't done, you know, for free. So how would the city go about doing that, using city funds, new sources, combination? And overall, folks realistically said, you know, it's going to have to come from a combination. Also to look at, the economic question, when we think about our population as a nation, we keep growing, right? Over time, we have seen our gross domestic product increase even with the recession. And so if you look at those first two trend lines on top, with the baseline of 1990 emissions, that's generally in climate science where they're measuring from, the 1990 emissions level. You know, we got an upward trend. But we've seen that emissions have been reduced by energy efficiency, more renewables coming on, while GDP has gone up. So we can see that the concern about, you know, gross domestic product, that, you know, it's still growing while we're actually reducing emissions. And so that's a favorable trend moving forward. And that was EPA information. What is the Paris Agreement? So international treaty over 195 countries. There's three tenants to this, and this is specifically what you asked us to look at. So dealing with the main goal, which is a temperature goal, in line with the climate science, so that this would stabilize the climate system as best as possible, about 450 parts per million CO2 by 2050. And so this is the goal, that the scientists are saying, that communities or nations, really in this agreement, the nations have to pledge to meet on their own wherewithal, because each nation is different, right? So that is the goal. And the U.S. actually put forward the 1 and 1/2 Celsius extra level to U.S. and China and other developed nations to get more aggressive about it, because there are some concerns that this isn't enough. So that was what they agreed to. And how to achieve this was more through low emission development. So that would be bringing on renewables, more walkable communities, reducing fossil fuel intake or combustion. And also to do so to not threaten the global supply of food. So one might think of ethanol being a renewable, but it also can actually hurt the Amazon forest, where if you take acreage out of food productivity for ethanol, there's been studies found that that actually is a relationship with clearage of forests in the Amazon. So it's profound in terms of the global impacts on some of these decisions, even if it is a renewable energy, right? And then finance flows, the U.S. specifically pledged $3 billion to help at-risk nations, developing nations to, in the form of grants, to create levies, to do infrastructure improvements so that they can abate some of the sea level rising, other impacts that they might be more challenged with in the future. $1 billion has been already given to those nations, and the rest has been on hold with our current president. That's been probably the most serious point in negotiation in the Paris Agreement about these flows of dollars. And a lot of it has to do with the fact of accounting for historic emissions from countries that rapidly industrialized before, or Third World nations, so U.S., European countries. It's a little bit more of, you know, trying to alleviate what was done in the past. So it is important to note that even though our current president has tabled the Paris Agreement, we're still in it technically till 2020, which is another election year. And basically, there's really no action going on. It's more voluntary. It's, a lot of the federal mandates that were a part of this initiative have either been rescinded or stalled out. National standards were really looked at through the Federal Climate Action Plan to achieve this goal, where cities were able just to kind of go along with the ride. Now, cities that are interested in getting into this have to come up with their own plans. So it's important to note that we're technically not out of the agreement. So again, being mindful of the city and how do we relate to this? What we first had to do was look at what the city pledged, or what the nation pledged. So it's important, every five years in the Paris Agreement, we're supposed to ratchet up our contributions to decrease greenhouse gases. So our first contribution, the national determined contribution, was 28% by 2025. So that was what we pledged to. And in 2020, we would create a more bold and aggressive contribution, and all the nations agreed to do that, right? So this is how we had to compare our city, at least initially, knowing that this is only step one. And it's hard, because we don't have a crystal ball, to know what the U.S. would do after 2020, right? So how does the city of Eau Claire match up, not only our municipality, but our community at large? We can look at greenhouse gases actually mapped thematically with whether it's in the commercial sector, the red, this is Indianapolis, by the way, not Eau Claire. You know, freeways with vehicle emissions and residential buildings more in the green. So there's technologies out there now to map this stuff. How does Eau Claire match up? What we first had to do was try to get 2005 data, and we were unable to get that far back, just because of time. And so the best attempt was 2015 data, and we got a lot of this data from our utilities, aggregated, de-identified. And so we can see what our CO2 emissions equivalents mean for our transportation sector, our residential, and our commercial. Our commercial is over 50%. So commercial would include industrial buildings, some of the larger plants like Nestle's, so forth, Cascades. So then we looked at the city, our municipality. And fortunately, we've been tracking this for a little bit, mainly because of our 25% renewable energy goal. And so we have seen at least a 13% reduction, 2011 through 2015, although we were not able to, still working on it, to get 2005 data. So if we can get 2005 data, at least for the municipality, we'll have a little bit better ability to judge ourselves against the national determined contribution. One thing caveat here is we don't know 2012 and 2014. All of, a lot of emissions are very dependent on weather. If coal climate, lately we've been using a lot more heat, right? So service response levels as well, we're using more, if there's more snow, we're using more plow trucks out there to service the roads. All of those things produce emissions. So if we look at the city and municipality together, municipality is about 2 and 1/2% of the whole pie or the whole silo here. So we're relatively small. So what the city does, the municipality does, is really small peanuts compared to looking at it from the whole city. And that's why the Sustainability Committee coupled the goals together to look at, the municipality needs to lead by example, if this is, you know, what the council wants to do. But the larger picture is the community, and so how can we work with the community? What does that translate to? I always like kind of boiling this down into more tangible things. So fossil fuel plant, that would mean about a quarter of a carbon, a normal-sized coal-fired power plant. It would mean for a year, running for a year, 260 wind turbines running for a year. So if you wanted to go renewables, a couple of wind farms, you could power the whole city. Carbon sinks, you would need 1.1, 1.2 million acres to sink all that carbon in. So puts things in perspective that even though Eau Claire's a small city, we have a big footprint. When we put it all together with the nation, it's a lot, it's a lot larger, gigatons we're talking about. So moving in to recommendations. So we tried to do the best job that we could with the data to compare the city, and we fell short in many ways because we just weren't able to actually get the 2005 data. Hopefully, with the municipality, we can do that. But our recommendations is to use the 2015 baseline. It's going to be the most accurate place to judge ourselves. So what we really need is firm commitment, if you would so choose to go down this path, to obtain data, to work with our partners. And already, Excel Energy has been giving the community energy reports to the city, 2015, 2016. So we already can get this data. They're providing it to their communities. So it's not difficult to get, but some have held out, and it's understandable because, you know, privacy concerns. So the waste sector, for example, we might need to look at innovative ways to try to obtain some of the waste hauling data, maybe through a third party. We'd have to think about it from a legal point of view. But we definitely want to be sensitive about the data concerns. But we also need to construct an accurate baseline. We don't have an accurate baseline, we're not having the confidence of how to actually reduce our emissions. So that's our first recommendation. The next, as I mentioned with the two silo charts, is looking at this together, city and municipality. The first goal is carbon neutral, which is basically no net emissions off that baseline of 2015. So if we emit more than the 2015 baseline, it needs to somehow be compensated by maybe our urban forests or other forms of sequestration of carbon. So basically, we need to be at 0% of the 2015 baseline by 2050. That's what carbon neutrality mean. This is similar for the city of St. Paul, who also has Excel Energy. This is similar for the city of St. Paul, who also has Excel Energy. So we can learn from other communities that have, that are going before us. Also, one of the main means to achieve this is to look at a goal of 100% renewable energy by 2050, quite considered lofty right now, but achievable in the long term as well. These are long-term goals. Already, we know we have 25% electricity that's clean, renewable from Excel on the grid. And so, you know, that is going to be a major way to achieve that carbon reduction. And then to do this in a process, in a planning process, this year, if you would so enact, to look at this from the, not only climate, but more so from the energy point of view, again, because we're talking about renewable energy and it's a main means to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions. So those are the main recommendations, the four. And this is a way to look at it, to break it down. This was in your report. So, you know, to make it a little bit more tangible annually, so if you look at the bottom of this table, the community baseline, the city and the community baseline of 2015. So if we're starting there, we're looking at drops moving all the way to the goal year of 2050. And so 1%, we start off, you know, in a transitional period, if you will, for five years, to 2020, 1% drop each year. And as I've already shown you, we dropped 13% in the course of five years from the data that we've got. So that's pretty doable. And then we get a little more aggressive each decade, moving out. And along with that, we ramp up renewable energy. So these are, these are a couple of goals as we move towards that date. And it's really a journey. We don't, all the solutions aren't known. There's assumptions that, as other cities have pledged 100% renewable energy, that technology will improve in various, different types of renewables or carbon sequestration. There's a lot of different technologies that could come online that could help us achieve that, too. But also, it is doable today. Like I had mentioned, if you looked at a house and you spent a little more money for 100% electricity, you can, you can achieve that today. So those are the goals. And then I tried to trend this out here. So the purple line, it would be the goals, dropping from 100% of our baseline by 2050. And so that would be the purple line. And then, because we're getting started later, our goal compensates, and so it's, that's why it's 100%. Other cities that started with 1990 data or 2005 data, they, or even the United States, they, they are, they're in the beginning there. And the first, the top line, the blue, if you can see that, furthest to the left, is the US national determined contribution, what I went over, the 28%. And so that trajectory is not going to make it, if, and that's why the US is going to resubmit every five years, right? And then the other trajectory is the 13% that I mentioned from the municipality, which we've been doing on our own volition, and that's, that's actually more aggressive than the goals. Now, mind you, that, the proposal is community and municipality together, so it's a bigger, bigger animal. So just to graph how this might look over time, again, starts off 1%, 2.5%, 3%, 4%. And then in the report, you asked us, you know, compare what we're doing as a city when it comes to development, when it comes to incentives, programs, and there's a lot of tables in there that mention how we're doing, there's progress. I'm not going to get into them here. If you have questions, we can answer them. But shows how the city is doing on various projects or goals. And so in those, we note a few other strategies that are in purple. One of them is to join a research, a resource network, the Global Covenant of Mayors for Climate and Energy, or there's other organizations, too, that are working together to combat this. And then also, very important to work with the utilities to achieve those renewable energy goals, as they have goals, you know, to align them. And then, energy conservation is always of utmost importance in energy efficiency, even before you look at renewables. So, you know, how can we drop our load for our buildings, for, for our city? And then low emissions, sustainable development, so how we build our communities, our development, how, how can we achieve where we have siting for renewable energy, for more walkable communities, where you don't have to drive, more, more efficient transit systems? That's all cast in the low emissions, sustainable development, transportation as well, as I mentioned. And then also, to divert methane from the landfill is to potentially capture more organic waste. We have a hauler already that has innovated to capture that waste, curbside, and to divert that more for composting, which is, reduces emissions. So those are some additional strategies to consider that are part of your report, what you asked for. So what, what does all this look like? This is pretty ambitious stuff, I think. This is the Minnesota State Plan, and so Minnesota, you know, there's Twin Cities, the suburbs. I've been looking at what they've been doing, and this is one scenario of what it could look like for a city. So energy efficiency, as I mentioned, is kind of bedrock. We need to reduce our load. Clean energy, you know, we need to ramp up different, whether it's purchasing wind power from Minnesota, or having local projects that we can build here at the city. And what that translates to in terms of the grid is, electricity is the key. And so if the electricity is more renewable, then you can power homes and vehicles with that clean electricity, and transition to cars, electric vehicles, buses, electric heating in the homes and buildings. And then the outcomes, looking at what, what can that mean for our community? So clean air, more, reduce localized pollution, improve public health, reduce risk for asthma and things like that. Create jobs. I think this is another scenario where we need to look at this from an economic development point of view. That's in your strategic plan as one of your, if not the top goal. And so we know that solar jobs have rapidly increased. It's a two-to-one ratio over coal jobs. We're not going to have coal jobs in Eau Claire. And so, you know, how can we build more infrastructure and projects to create jobs? Service jobs, manufacturers, installers, for, for this, these energy projects right here in Eau Claire, for a job creation tool, while we pursue our goals? And so that's, that's what the state of Minnesota is looking at. How can we leverage these goals in terms of economic development? And lastly, too, as a kind of a caveat, is these electric vehicles with their batteries, they also can provide grid, grid resiliency, so that if there's peak demand in high, hot summer times, that the grid could potentially pull off energy from vehicles. And when these vehicles are being charged at night, that's when electricity is usually cheaper than during the day. And so you can actually save money that way if you have electric vehicle charging overnight. So this is one scenario of what it could look like for 2050. And we already have seen projects like this in Eau Claire. This is one megawatt on abandoned landfill land that we were able to secure a lease from a developer. And in partnership, as I mentioned, is very critical to work with others in this. And so with Excel Energy as the lead, we partnered with them for this one megawatt array. And at the time, it was the largest community solar array in the state of Wisconsin. And I know Excel's very proud of that, and we are, too, as a community. So it's these innovative approaches and strategies of how we can do this, and we've already been showing that it is possible. So this is the path we've laid, laid out for you. The next steps that you need to consider is, do you need more information? We did the best we could to present for you a report that was hopefully technically merited, that you would understand where we're at as a community with greenhouse gases, where we're at with alignment with these goals, but then also some of the public policy decisions that you have to consider about moving forward with these recommendations. And then also, critical considerations of funding and grants and partnerships. How do we work together? How do we leverage grants that are out there? Not to put you on the spot, but there's a great grant for climate action planning on January 29th, it's due. So they're out there. So this is the pathway that we've, we've recommended, the Sustainability Committee. And do you have any questions at this time?
Thank you. Councilmember Mitchell.
Thank you. This was an excellent presentation, and, and I was, very good report, I thought. This is not my field of expertise, so I have, I have quite a few questions about it, and I'll, may I ask two? Okay. I guess the first one is that you, you made really three recommendations, in addition to creating a plan. And one of those was to use 2015 as the baseline. Other than that you couldn't get data further back, what are the consequences of that? That's one of your recommendations. So why is that, why does that rise to that level? Is there something more to know about that?
No, I think it's just a starting place. So, you know, if, if we, if we were able to obtain earlier data, most likely our emission profile would be lower. And so, you know, our goals might be less, not as ambitious. For example, the city of Minneapolis is 80% reduction by 2050. Well, they're using, and I forget exactly, it's in the chart that I provided of all the cities. A lot of these cities that have been starting earlier, they've been tracking earlier. And so for, for our recommendations for 2015, it's the most reliable data set that, that I feel confident moving forward with. So I want to, I want to give you a good recommendation in terms of the right data to be using. The rest is going to be too much of an estimate. And so that's, that's the best confidence level that we have to recommend that, at least for the whole, whole city. If we can get to 2005 data, and I'm still working at that, then we'll come back and let you know about that, for sure. But that's, to answer your question, that is the most reliable baseline. And so it is a bit arbitrary in terms of the baseline, but it's a place to judge yourself
And then one other question is about wind. Is that really a viable alternative for us in this area?
Wind siting locally, no. Maybe micro turbines, yes, on ridge tops and things like that. If you see CVTC, they have a wind turbine. It's more for educational purposes, but really, it would be purchasing wind. So for example, I had mentioned wind source. You can, as a business, Luther, or Mayo Clinic purchases a lot of wind source power from Excel Energy. UWU C, Davie Center is 100% powered by wind. So all what they do is they, they purchase that through their utility bills, at a premium of $1.41, $1.41 cents per 100 kilowatt block. So there's a bit of a premium there.
Councilmember Clint Cameron.
Thank you. Mr. Noel, the, the third item on that list, the funding and the grants and the partnerships, considering all the positive things that we've been doing in the city, and city is only accounting for, if I did it correctly, about 2% of what the community is developing in terms of the carbon footprint, is the Sustainability Committee working on that? I mean, or is that not part of their charge?
The funding and the grants.
The partnerships mainly.
Yes.
Because getting the, the commercial and manufacturing buying into the solution of this.
And that's where we'd want, based off of your direction, if you want to pursue these goals, we would, we would engage through partnerships, through, you know, planning processes, the most formal approach to do that. But that would be our main agenda, is to engage other special interest groups of how we can do this together.
But we haven't started that process yet. Okay. Thank you.
You called that a climate action, no?
It could be called an energy action plan. It could be called a climate action plan, many different names.
I see.
Councilmember Whitman.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Noel, thank you for the presentation this evening, and thank you to the committee for a lot of work, I'm sure, over the last half year. The question I wanted to ask is going off of Councilmember Mitchell's question about the baseline, and is it, just so I understand it, is it that because there's been a reduction of emissions over the last, however, number of years, five, 10 years, that essentially we're picking a lower starting point than, say, a 2005 point? Is that essentially why the baseline is lower at 2015 than it was previously? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Well, the baseline at 2015 is going to be higher. Our community emissions, the assumption is, is that it's going to be higher. If you look at the national trend line, too, it would, it would be higher, too.
I thought you had presented that some emissions had been reducing over the last few years. Was that accurate?
Yeah, now, now it's our city, just for that five-year period, but I don't, I don't have on either side of that.
Oh, okay.
So what we're seeing is that 2015 emissions is going to be higher than that, that lower date of 2005 or 1990. And so that's, the goal, the higher goal compensates for that higher profile of emissions. So it ratchets it down quicker. And so these goals, they, you know, it might be comparable to the city of Minneapolis, but on paper, it actually might look more ambitious.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
But it's really the critical part, is where are you starting from? What's your emission baseline?
Mm-hmm. Can I ask a follow-up? In terms of the, the waste side of this, can you talk about how important that is in this equation, and, you know, in terms of knowing what our, our community waste is? And then also, do you think that we're somehow at a disadvantage? Because I know a lot of cities, we're sort of unique in the way that we handle waste management in the city, in that we, you know, we allow multiple haulers to do it, and, and we license it versus communities that sometimes haul themselves or just go with one hauler. Do you think we're at a disadvantage in terms of actually coming up with accurate numbers for our waste? And what are the sort of solutions that you see to us getting a good number on that?
Yeah, the solid waste is not a large portion that we're missing, thankfully. So this is a pretty good baseline. If we can't get the data, we can, we can use proxies and estimates to get there, but some of the collection emissions, so the haulers, even though we have, you know, multiple haulers, those vehicle miles traveled will be embedded in the transportation total. The excess would be the, the, the miles that are outside of the city limits to the landfill, which is only maybe like two miles or something. And then the, the city is, there's only a part of the city that covers the landfill, so we kind of get lucky that way. But those emissions that come off of that landfill there would show up in the, in the red, missing art. So the other question you asked is, you know, what could we do about it? Again, it's public policy, but, you know, considering, can we, can we divert more organic compostables from the landfill, commercial and residential sector? What would that look like for the haulers? How would that happen in a transition period? We already see that one hauler is able to do it, another hauler has piloted it and does it with commercial, and there's two compost landfills already outside of town. So infrastructure is already becoming available. So those would be things that we, we would need to consider of how you'd want to take action with those.
Oh, Councilmember Strum.
Thank you. Mr. Noel, and some of your suggestions to reduce the emissions, I saw electric and wind and a lot of those types of things, and not my area of expertise either, but compare natural gas-powered vehicles to gas or diesel-powered vehicles. What's the, what's the, the difference there, and why would you not be looking at that as a potential solution? You know, we've got a lot of natural gas in this country, and, and I mean, maybe that's a way to help as well.
Right, yeah. So that's a good question. Natural gas is baseload generation, is basically replacing coal. And the economics and utilities are changing over their coal plants to natural gas. The fortunate thing is, natural gas is a lot more, about 75% reduced emissions from coal. So that is, I, I see it as a transitional fuel. It is something that, as a time being, these plants that have come online, combined cycle natural gas plants, are way more efficient, so they're wa, they're using less, or they're emitting way, less waste heat. They're more efficient, they're less emissions, so they're a bridge fuel. Not the answer for the long term, but it is a domestic resource that has been harnessed... Not the answer for the long term, but it is a domestic resource that has been harnessed. The cost effectiveness of these plants is one of the highest right now. Levelized cost of energy is one of the best for natural gas. So I think we have to be realistic in this transition, that some of these forms of energy, even if they do have carbon embedded in them, that it's a transitional period, including nuclear. These plants are going to be around for some time, maybe more 20 years, they're carbon-free for the interim. So how do we, you know, we look at when that generation supply is up for renewal, and it's very costly for nuclear power plants, you know, can there be a substitute at that time with that, more of those renewables coming in? So that's really why we need to partner with the utilities, is that they know the energy game best, and they're making these capital decisions for 50-plus years out. So how can we work with Excel and the Energy Co-op to make investments that are key not only for reliable, safe power, but also for clean, to meet our goals?
Follow-up on that, if I may? Could I follow up on that? That was a great answer. I'm looking more at it from a, maybe a city perspective here. Natural gas-powered vehicles compared to gas or diesel, I don't know if it's even practical, but what would be the savings there? I mean, have you looked at that at all? It just seems like it might be, like you say, a transitional.
Yeah, you know, we haven't looked at it in depth, and we can look at it more as a strategy. You know, QuickTrip has started to, with a lot of their trucks in their fleet, you know, tried to shift some of the trucks that way. But I just don't know enough about that to give you a solid answer right now on if that is something that we should be looking at in light of the greenhouse gas emission reductions. We'd need to explore that. And that's what the planning process is, is what are options available in the near term, in the interim, and in the long term, and how do we get to that goal? And create different scenarios.
Okay. I can't see your light. Do you have it on? Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Noel, and to members of the Sustainability Advisory Committee for your leadership and your work on this. So this is really helpful, because now we have a handful of brass tacks that we can consider as policymakers. So thank you very much for that. I have more than two questions, although I can limit myself, and then, if the chair would allow, maybe later on, to ask additional questions. The first question is related to something I saw on page three of the report, or page 102 in the packet. And it was also on page 13. It talked about some historical connection that Eau Claire had, as calling it, saying that they were going to subscribe as an ecomunicipality and the Natural Step. I think this is back in 2009. I have to say, that was the first time I've heard of that. And so, I'm, I don't know if I've missed something, or where that information comes to policymakers. One of the things in the report on page 13, it says, in regards to the principles of the ecomunicipality, it says, "To date, these principles have not been integrated into the way the city does business." And so, I'm wondering, do you see opportunity for the city to embed these principles? And are we sure that the ecomunicipality way is still the best way to do things?
Good questions. So, at that time, when the council adopted that resolution, there was a movement afoot, so to speak, in our state, where the Natural Step framework was a framework to look at sustainability that came out of Sweden. And maybe 30 communities in our state passed that resolution. And so, we were on board with that. And the system conditions, there's four of them, reduce fossil fuels. So it's very in line with what we're talking about here. Reduce toxic substances, which, you know, can cause health concern or environmental concern. Reduce encroachment on nature. And then also meet human needs, fundamental human needs, water, sewage, safety, things that we strive at, you know, as a city. So those are the four system conditions. We, obviously, number four, we do a great job of, right? Number one, two, and three, you know, those are areas to talk about. And some cities, in their staff report, when they come with development, they actually note how the project is meeting all four system conditions. For example, the city of Beloit does it that way. So the development review would look at the four system conditions and tell you if they're achieving the goals that you have set forth. So we have not integrated that deeply, but that's an example of how it could be done.
And may I ask a follow-up on that? Is there a reason why the city has not done that integration? You know, so in 2009, a resolution was passed. Okay, great, we're on board. And then, I guess it seems, I'm not sure where it went from there.
We do, in many ways, we just don't call it the four system conditions. I mean, the sustainability chapter was created, and a lot of initiatives that we've been working on, you know, the reductions of the CO2, the 13% I had mentioned, the upgrades to our energy, our water and sewage plants. So in many ways, we have, we just haven't labeled it that way. And so, if that's some concern of yours, you know, we can use more of that language. But some cities, like the city of Madison, have used it more in their strategic planning as well. So there are various degrees to use that as a way to look at sustainability.
Other questions? You had more questions? We may proceed.
Thank you. The second round of questions I have is around this, wasn't really a formal suggestion, although I think it was a hint that we should do this or think about this, is to join the Global Covenant of Mayors for Climate and Energy. And just wondering if we have any more information on that of, if we don't have a mayoral system, can we still join? What does it mean? Are we just paying a membership, or do we actually do stuff because we'd be a part of that?
Yeah, we looked at that network, you know, what are other communities doing? So that naturally popped up. It's a large initiative, global, so the mayor of Paris, Michael Bloomberg, lots of cities, 7,500 have committed to this all around the world. So it's a group that, there's a lot of resources there that we can tap to be able to understand, you know, how, what they've already done. They've gone before us, you know, learned from them. It really, I didn't see, when I did my research, any cost. It was basically, city council would need to adopt a resolution that would commit to formal goals, inventory emissions, and set targets and complete an action plan within three years. So that is what you would commit to if you would join something like that.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Thank you. I have one, I have two other, two other things, if that's okay. Regarding recommendations two and three, if we succeed in recommendation three, 100% renewable energy by 2050, do we automatically fulfill recommendation two?
Not necessarily, because you've got the waste. So the waste is producing emissions at the landfill. But generally speaking, a lot of it is accomplished.
So we really couldn't do two without doing three?
Correct.
Put it that way?
That's why it's there.
That easier to, yeah, okay, all right.
Yep.
And then, finally, I personally think that doing a climate and energy action plan is a really good idea. And if the council decides to do that, I just want to say that I would hope it would be the kind of planning process that we use in this city, with large, a large advisory group that had experts helping them, and, you know, our regular planning process, which I think has served us very well over the years. So I'd just throw that out for your consideration. To that end, would you see the action plan, implement planning thing viable in over a year, or the, and if we were going to join the mayor's thing, which I've read quite a bit about and never felt that it matched our work, or we were doing, I might say, fine without it. But, you know, maybe we need to examine that it would bring in resources or things we could tap into. I don't know about that. But be that as it may, what would be a sort of planning calendar? An expectation of when we'd have a plan to implement, do you think?
Well, it depends on your action first. So if we have direction from council, and say we do, and it's aggressive action, which is in recommendations to doing a plan in 2018, I would say that we at least get going in 2018. And, you know, it takes time to formulate how to, you know, get into that plan. And then, when you start to kick off meetings with the advisory group, or a technical committee or something, there's various ways. We've been reaching out to different cities. The city of St. Paul has done it more staff-driven. We may want to bring on a consultant to help us with some of the technical experience, to give us added capacity. So there's things that we'll need to kind of understand in terms of costs and things like that, that could prolong the planning process as well, depending on if we need to allow funding for that in the CIP, or if we need time to get a grant, or if we also want to reach out, for example, St. Paul has worked with Excel Energy, and I don't know about the financial arrangements, but in Minnesota, Excel Energy has a Partners for Energy program. And from what I understand, Excel was at the table all the way with city staff and their city council and their mayor to devise an energy plan that dealt with this carbon neutrality goal. And so, we've been working with their policy people to understand their process. So it could look different ways.
Okay.
But our established planning processes, we know that well as staff, and communities are very familiar with it, very transparent and inviting, so we would use something similar.
Yeah, I think we are good at it, including how we create the task force in the first place. Not by individual, but by criteria broadly based, all that. And if you're hoping to include the commercial sector, that would be imperative.
And I see Councilmember Beaton has a light on.
Thank you, Council President. And I wanted to thank you, Mr. Noel, for your work on this, and the Sustainability Advisory Committee. I'm really thrilled to see this before us, and, you know, after six months of work, it really shows, so I appreciate it. I have a couple of questions as well. As we talk about the climate action plan, I'm thinking about what kind of, you know, deadlines we might have, or not deadlines, but ambitious goals for a timeline. I'm wondering if you think that the climate action plan is, if all of these resolutions are essential to go together, or if we can kind of address one now, and then come back to the others later? I guess I'm specifically thinking if you think it's appropriate to work on, if we were to support a climate action plan, if we could come back to the other goals later.
Yeah, ultimately, it's up to the city council to decide what things you want to pursue, I think. My recommendation, and the committee's recommendation, was to set targets, do an action process, the plan, and obviously, work to get that data all the way through going forward. So those would be our recommendations. If you don't feel comfortable with that, the planning process could drive what ultimate goals we end at. So there's different ways to look at it, depending on what you feel comfortable with.
Okay. I do have a second question. Is that all right? Okay. I was also wondering about the solid waste data point, and if the Sustainability Advisory Committee will be continuing to try to find that data point, or if that is going to be left for the moment.
We will continue to make phone calls, and if we can have the council help in some way, shape, or form, that would be great, too. We also could think of, like I had mentioned, maybe a third party to be able to get the data from, and I don't know if that would avoid the open records request type situation, but through a third party. But we will continue to make phone calls and ask and push.
Can you explain that a little bit more, the issue with that?
The open request?
I know the answer, but just to bring that into the light.
Right. And it's a valid concern, is that competitors, they would like to see, you know, their, the opposing businesses', you know, performance, and how many customers they have, how much revenue, and how can they eat into their market? And so, we have, you know, eight haulers, and they're very competitive marketplace. So they are very interested. It was the same situation when we looked at the plastic bag. The grocery stores weren't willing to share how many bag numbers, because that could be quantified in terms of how many customers. So it's very understandable. And so, you know, at the end of the day, if we have to use a proxy, we can. But again, when I'm working on this, I want to use the best credible data for you. And so, that's why we, I left it as NA for the time being, knowing that it's not a huge piece of the whole pie.
Perhaps the larger point is working on the relationship and the shared goal thing. Councilmember Von Hayden.
As Councilmember Klinghammer kind of brought up, or did bring up, the city can adopt a lot of different goals and a lot of different things, but we're a very small, minute portion of this total package. Yes, we have a transportation system, and we can do a lot of things in that area. My question gets into, how do we get to the real area, the commercial and the other areas where the big dollars are, or the big emissions are? How do we get them to join us in trying to reduce these emissions?
Right. I think it's for them to see that it's to their self-advantage. And maybe they don't see that now, but we know that there are companies that are already doing that. If you think of Mayo Clinic, they're doing it with that wind source, as I mentioned. Wells Fargo, with their global portfolio of real estate pledged, or they actually are 100% clean energy now, Wells Fargo. Cascade Industry, you know, heavy manufacturing in the city, has a sustainability platform to reduce emissions. So corporate entities see that not only is this good for the environment, but it's good for dollars and cents, too. Also, from a point of view of recruitment, of people that want to work for sustainable companies. So I think that that, as the city, my opinion, as the city leads, we will help others to show them a way. And by working strategically with utility partners like Excel, they will be the means, the main means, to be able to deliver that for them. For example, I know Excel is considering some renewable energy programs to bring before the PSC. And so, that might be something where the city, we want to support them, and say, you know, this is another option for the community to pursue, along with community solar and energy efficiency. So that would be ways of trying to reduce that at total. Also, Excel Energy is trying to work with small and medium businesses, size businesses right now, to reduce their energy load. So they created a new program using their focus on energy dollars. So they're going after it as well, to reduce emissions for, in dollar, or energy for those companies.
We've, I'll get you in just a second. We have some people in the audience who perhaps came here to speak tonight, or say something that's on their mind. So I think we'll dismiss you shortly. It looks like we have one short question before.
Well, this is actually more of a statement.
Oh.
Can I make a statement? It's to Councilmember Von Hayden's point, and to Councilmember Emanuel's point. But in St. Paul, they've actually developed a district energy system where they can use combined heat and power, where they're both generating electricity and heat, and that heat is actually in their down- heat is actually in their downtown, and they share, essentially, an energy source in their downtown. And it makes it going from 30% efficiency on burning diesel fuel to closer to 90% efficiency by doing combined heat and power. I bring this up because it takes a lot of planning to do a program like that. You have to get public and private partners together to say, for example, hospitals and manufacturers, you have to get everyone together to say, we want this sort of heating system, for example, in a downtown. And I'm just sharing one example, but the fact is, is that I think we can share a huge role in this as a city and as a city council, in terms of what we're doing on transportation, what we're doing in terms of neighborhood developments, what we're doing in terms of energy, downtown redevelopment. There's a whole lot of places where actually our policy can help aid in what the private sector is doing, and encouraging the private sector to sort of participate in that. So I wanted to kind of bring that forward as a, St. Paul's a great example, but to sort of answer Councilmember Von Hayden's question about, you know, what is our role, and how can we be participants in it. So with that, I'll look forward to the public input on this item. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. So now there's an invitation to members of the public who wish to speak on this agenda item, you know, specifically speak what's on your mind, offer insights, experience.
Good evening, councilmembers. I appreciate this opportunity. I'm Dr. Crispin Pierce, professor of environmental public health at the university, and also the vice chair of the Sustainability Advisory Committee. Appreciate the time that you're spending considering this important issue. We know a lot about climate change in Wisconsin. We know in 1993, we had cryptosporidium outbreak due to heavy rainfall in Milwaukee. We know we lost Lake Dalton a couple of years ago to heavy rainfall. We've seen a large increase in both, in vector-borne disease, both mosquito and tick-borne disease. In the last 25 years, for example, we're seeing 10 times as much Lyme disease now in Wisconsin. So we are experiencing the effects of climate change now. That's why I think it's so important that you consider, and we consider this together as a municipality. The mandate to act has been very clear. It's part of the sustainability chapter of our comprehensive plan. U.S. City Council members gave us a mandate to formulate some recommendations, and I'm glad we're able to present them to you today. And in addition, the two surveys that Mr. Noel talked about have indicated an aggressive policy that citizens in Wisconsin, and particularly Eau Claire, want to make in terms of reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So in my perspective, it's very, very clear that we have a mandate to move forward with this initiative. The goals, I think, are very bold and worthwhile, the 2050 reduction in, to get a carbon neutrality, as well as 100% renewable energy. I also feel like the climate action plan, as we've been discussing, gives us a lot of flexibility to work with partners in the city and find different creative ways to move forward to actually meet these goals. Finally, I appreciate the opportunity. We as, myself as a member of the Sustainability Advisory Committee, is really excited to work with the city council. We hope you will pass this mandate to us to continue this important work. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pierce. Thank you. Just so people understand, there is no action on our agenda tomorrow. Does, is, do you all, you understand that? It doesn't mean that there won't be soon, but there isn't tomorrow.
Good evening. Jeremy Gregert at 451 Lincoln Avenue. Really appreciate all of the attention you're giving to this issue tonight, and all the great questions, and the work of our Sustainability Advisory Committee and Mr. Noel. I'm on the Sierra Club board, and we decide, we have monthly programs, and we decided to have Mr. Noel come and speak in January, and we knew something big was going to be happening, apparently, because it was a great presentation. We got to see the results of the report, and the conversation was really, really very positive. This is a really ambitious way of looking at how the city can respond and help the community respond. Obviously, the Paris Climate Agreement, you know, has, has, you know, the fact that the cities have to step up in the context of the fact that the federal government is not acting upon the objectives, is something, it's kind of exciting to see cities really take a leadership role, and great to see, like, the interest in the public here, too. The report has really good survey data, and that is maybe somewhat surprising, because we haven't had a lot of good local survey data on this subject. I'm involved in a group of, I help coordinate a group of about 30 nonprofit organizations in the state that are working on climate change right now, and working on clean energy. And we have some data from polling that we have done in Eau Claire County that we'll soon be releasing, that we can kind of see how it matches up. And the numbers that I've seen, it's really showing that people are interested in communities taking action and finding ways for people to change their own habits, and also, you know, work with the private sector to make changes, too. The, I guess the, you know, one of the most exciting recommendations that I see in here is the 100% renewable energy by 2050. For our group of about 30 nonprofits in the state analyzing this issue, that's pretty much in line with what we think cities have to do. Overall, our goal is 80% reductions from 2005 levels by 2050, in terms of carbon emissions statewide. And cities, I think, have a unique opportunity, because we have a close relationship with each other, and we have a lot of intensive industries. We really have to step up more, or stronger than maybe a rural area is capable of doing. We have seen some examples of, you know, the city working with partners, as Mr. Noel mentioned, with Excel Energy, and that's really a unique place that we're in, where we have a utility that is responsive, that is, that has pressure coming from other states like Minnesota as well, that are able to kind of help us along. So I just wanted to express my support for this report, and the city continuing this conversation involving the public and all of the stakeholders involved. And I think, you know, a climate and energy action plan is really a place for us to hash that out a lot more, certainly in front of this body, as you decide what paths to take in that regard. They'll be, having more and more opportunities for the public to engage, and for the private sector to engage should be great. So thanks for this opportunity, and thanks again to the committee and to Mr. Noel for putting this forward.
Thank you, Mr. Gregert.
Hello, my name is Jim Bolter. I live at 1226 Graham here in Eau Claire. And I want to start by thanking President Kincaid and all of Eau Claire City Council for really showing leadership back in June, when you passed this resolution, and for continuing to show that leadership by taking the time to address this issue with the seriousness that deserves. I'm an atmospheric chemist, and my field of study is climate change, but I'm also highly involved at the university, in the chemistry department, and the Watershed Institute for Collaborative Studies, on issues of how do we marry science and good public policy? So again, I want to thank you for addressing this and for taking this issue on. Councilman Von Hayden made a really good point about the need to partner with businesses in Eau Claire, and President Kincaid as well, about the necessity of, and again, sorry, Councilman Worthman, about the necessity of the city council really acting as a sort of an honest broker at the center of collaborative partnerships. And one of the partnerships that I want to encourage you to continue working on is with the university. The university and the city are, have increasingly been very capable partners, very good collaborators on any number of issues. And I think this is one more issue where the university and the city, and local businesses, and local community groups can really establish themselves. So as a member of the university community, I am working with students and with staff from across campus, and administration and other faculty, to develop a climate action plan for the university. And as it turns out, that climate action plan, although it is not yet, it's still in draft form, we are looking at a very similar target to what the city is, has, well, sorry, the recommendations that the SAC has put forward to this group. And so I'm really encouraged by that, and I think that if organizations, businesses such as Mayo, and one of, another of the large economic engines in the city, the university, can share these sorts of, these goals, and can actively collaborate on them, as has already been shown, then I think we have a real shot at this. And so I want to commend the excellent work of Mr. Noel and the excellent work of the SAC, which I was a member of until recently. And I want to strongly encourage all the members of city council to continue this work of moving forward towards this audacious but necessary goal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Bolter.
I'm a senior at Memorial High School, and I came tonight because my environmental science teacher told me that this was happening. I didn't really know or, like, really understand climate change before this year, when I took the environmental science class. And since then, I've joined our club called the Eco Warriors, which is an environmental kind of club at Memorial. And I think it's really fantastic, because a lot of people in our school, like, are now able to compost because of our club. And so through, like, composting during different lunches, we've been able to kind of raise awareness of the problem of climate change. And all I've gotten back from teaching people about how to compost and what they can compost is, like, positive feedback. People really like that we're doing this, and I think that if Eau Claire were to do this, the people in high school and college around my age would be really there to back you up. And I really appreciate that you guys are doing this. So thank you.
My name is Mark Ruddy, and I live at 1016 Dodge Street, and I'll pretty much read my presentation. Thank you again for your service to your community and for hearing us tonight. I speak tonight from two perspectives. First, as president of the Steering Committee of the Eastside Hill Neighbor Association, it is my duty to pass on to you this statement from our committee. We are indebted to our city's Sustainability Committee, city planner Ned Noel, and our community's sustainability activities that have led us to this report. As a committee, we urge the city council to embrace this report and to proceed aggressively to follow the Paris Climate Agreement, especially as it sets targeted goals. We, as a diverse community, is committed to safeguarding both the future of our older children's grandparents, grandchildren, from a grandparent's perspective, as well as the future of our younger families' children. It is our day-to-day work that can improve our area somewhat, like doing our kind of mundane annual May thrift sale that helps us to reuse items. What we really need is the trajectory, to change the trajectory of our climate and to do many of the things we should have done yesterday. The second hat I wear is related to what Ned Noel was talking about in the Paris Agreement, that we do take some responsibility towards our less fortunate neighbors in the world. But let me continue on with that thought to support that. It is my own personal belief that it is unconscionable, it's quite a word, unconscionable, for us to, for us in the more developed world, to have disproportionately caused man-made crisis, to not take more responsibility for the damage being caused right now in the less developed countries. We are too often prompted to go shopping to improve our happiness, while the vulnerable of the world pay the real price. With 5% of the world's population, our country continues to use more than a quarter of the world's fossil fuel resources, for example. Let me share a dynamic from my own family. Picture this. My seven-year-old nephew had every toy car imaginable in the household grabbed to his chest. He didn't have an appendage to play with any of them. His cousin asked for one of them to play with. The child with all the cars responded, "What? Don't you know what sharing is?" So he was stealing even the voice of protest from his less fortunate neighbors. We need to give up our clever, skewed sense of entitlement and recognize our causality role in this climate crisis. One of my heroes is Dr. Paul Farmer, co-founder of Partners in Health. His perspective is that, quote, "The idea that some lives matter less is the root of all what's wrong with this world." I repeat, he states, "The idea that some lives matter less is the root of all that's wrong with this world." As our city council, we ask you to take a leadership role in planning this future based on sustainability and equity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ruddy. Anyone else want to speak tonight?
Hi, I'm Patty Scott. I also live at 1016 Dodge Street in Eau Claire. I'm really, want to thank you for giving this the attention that it really deserves, and for Ned's group and the Sustainability Advisory Committee, for all the work that they've done. It's obviously been a lot of work. I'm here tonight to speak as a member of the Eau Claire Chapter of Citizens Climate Lobby, which is a nonpartisan group working for a bipartisan climate action. They have a well-studied proposal called Carbon Fee and Dividend, which is gaining attention and support from people on both sides of the aisle. Under this plan, a steadily rising fee on fossil fuels and greenhouse gases would be imposed where they enter our economy, whether that might be at a mine or a well, at a port of entry. To prevent any trade disadvantage, a border tariff would be imposed on imports from countries without an equivalent carbon fee. These fees would be collected and returned to households in equal per-person monthly dividends. A study of the household impacts of this plan show that most people would benefit or at least break even from this. To evaluate their proposal, Citizens Climate Lobby commissioned a study to analyze the environmental, economic, and health impacts. They concluded that during the first 20 years, we would see at least a 50% reduction of carbon emissions below 1990 levels, prevent 230,000 premature deaths due to pollution, and stimulate the creation of 2.8 million jobs. And GDP would grow more robustly than without the fee. This is significant. Because this plan is market-based and it's revenue-neutral, it does not rely on regulations administered by multiple government bodies. It has attracted interest across the political spectrum, which can be very hard to do these days. What I'm asking you to consider is to formally add your, the weight of your voice as a city council to those who are pushing our national legislators to enact this sort of carbon fee and dividend plan. You would be joining a growing number of communities all across the country, not the least of which is what I consider a sister city, La Crosse. And in December, La Crosse passed a resolution, both the common council and the county board supporting this carbon fee and dividend plan, and that resolution has been passed on to Congressman Kind and Senator Johnson and Senator Baldwin. So I'm here to kind of plant a seed and ask you to consider formally supporting this carbon fee and dividend plan, and I would be very happy to point you towards resources that would tell you a lot more about that than I can do in five minutes tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Question for Ms. Scott?
It's more of a statement. I don't think you have to come back up. I would just request that you could maybe put that together in an email, and if you sent it to the city manager, to Ms. Merle, they can pass it on to council for consideration.
I can also send you a copy of the La Crosse resolution, so you can see what that community has done. I'd be happy to do that.
Anyone else here to speak tonight on this issue? Anyone else here to speak tonight on this issue? It's been a lively discussion and energizing, actually. Anyone else, then?
Can I ask another question of Mr. Noel?
Oh, sure. Yep. Sorry, I didn't.
That's okay. No, I just turned it on.
Okay. Councilmember Weld.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Noel, and again, thank you, as everyone has already expressed, on all the work that's been put into this. Is there, does it make any sense, I realize that we're just looking at Eau Claire and measuring Eau Claire and our accomplishments and hopefully meeting our goals, but does it make any sense to work with the communities around us at the same time, or share resources, or share cost with, maybe an action plan with Chippewa Falls and Altoona? Is that something that's done elsewhere, or is that making it more difficult?
Yeah, good question. I think, you know, we haven't seen a lot of messages sent from those other communities regarding this topic, so they may perhaps learn from us and then come on, but, you know, our recommendations are for the city, our community, and the municipality at this time, but in the future, maybe that could be added on, depending on what those council wants to do, and if you want to do that. We can reach out, you know, we did an energy plan together with Altoona and the county. We were able to secure a grant that way. It gets more complicated because they have their own footprints, so they would need time to build those footprints to understand what it looks like for their communities. That takes time. So that could slow things down, but they can learn from us as well, so. It might, you might have to wait and see how that might play out with those communities.
One more. Where's the county in all this, and what, have they come up with an action plan of any kind, or are they?
They don't have anything related to, far as I know, you know, drawing down greenhouse gases. They do have this energy plan that I mentioned. It's a joint plan that we work together on. You know, resources-wise, I don't know if they are able to dedicate it to these issues, but we could engage them in terms of some of the strategies of how to reduce greenhouse gases.
I was just curious. Thank you.
Remanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I have one outstanding question, and I think this is probably for the City Manager. Maybe it's for you as well, Mr. Noel. This is in regards to the funding possibility that was mentioned with the deadline of January 29th. Is that something that you foresee needs formal council action? And if so, is January 23rd enough time to prepare that?
Okay, so that, this is a unique proposal. It's partnership place. It's round 12, so they do funding for sustainability plans. And it's unique because it's basically a partnership with a charitable organization or a utility. So the utility or the charitable organization would pledge, you know, the half-match, and then the organization would do the other match. So basically, for the city, it's really only our time, you know, as helping to be involved in that. So the grant is up to $150,000 for a two-year span, or up to $100,000 for a one-year span. So we are eligible to apply. We're not in the sustainability network, but, so those communities have higher preference, but we would still have a shot at it. But we would need to secure a charitable organization match, at least a pledge, so I've thought about, like, Eau Claire Community Foundation, to ask them their grant package is due the 31st of January. Talked to Excel Energy, possibly, if they want to partner and be that match. So there are some ideas that I've thought of. We would still need authorization from Council to apply for grants towards, whether it be this grant or other grants, too, if we're going to look for that sort of funding. But that authorization would have to most likely come at your next meeting. Not Tuesday, but next.
23rd.
Yeah, the 23rd. We can prepare that for you if you'd like.
I mean, I would like to request that, that it's prepared, and I know that we're not here to place items on the agenda, but since we're talking about it, I'll express my support for that.
Yeah, so we've relatively recently learned about it. We're exploring the possibility to see if we can put that grant together. And as is frequently found on your agenda packets, I mean, when staff can find those opportunities and put the materials together, you know, you'll find it on your council agenda. So we are exploring it, and if we're able to put that together and make a viable application, you'll likely see it at your next agenda.
Any other questions or citizen input? We thank you again. That brings to an end our meeting for the evening, and there being no further business to come before this body without objection on a motion by Councilmember Mitchell, seconded by Councilmember Strobel. We are adjourned.
The Eau Claire City Council meeting will return in a moment. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM. We now return you to the Eau Claire City Council meeting.
This meeting of the Eau Claire City Council will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Emmanuel. Kincaid.
Here.
Clinkhammer.
Here.
Mitchell.
Here.
Strobel.
Here.
T. Walt.
Von Hayden.
Here.
Weld.
Here.
Worthman.
Here.
Zhang.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and welcome, everyone, to the January 9th Legislative Session of the Eau Claire City Council. During its legislative session, the Council deliberates and takes action on the agenda items before us. We have prepared for this responsibility by working with citizens and collaborating with staff, reading the considerable amount of materials in our council packet. We do arrive this afternoon ready to perform our duty. We welcome those of you who are joining us in chambers and are grateful, as always, to Community Television for streaming and broadcasting these proceedings for people who cannot attend in purpose, in person. We do have important items on our agenda, and just as a reminder, we will finish our meeting with a work session up in the north conference room. The first order of business this afternoon is the consent agenda. Do councilmembers wish to remove an item or have questions on an item? Councilmember Mitchell?
Thank you. I have a question on items 10 and 11 for Mr. Solberg.
Okay. Any other questionable items? No? Okay. Mr. Solberg?
Hello.
Thank you. I'm just curious about the difference between a petition for alley improvements and what we're doing now on a regular basis with our alley improvement program. So what's different about these two?
With our alley improvement program, we've been targeting the alleys that we know are being used that have an aggregate surface, or they were pavement and now they're pretty much deteriorated. And we go through those and try to cluster those. You'll see at the work session later, we have a number of those in the Eastside Hill. Last year was in Randall Park. So these alleys were on the west side, and they weren't in a cluster, and they weren't being, we didn't witness them being used as much as other ones. So it just, when we get a petition and we submit it, it just ensures that they're done that year, that the petition is accepted. So if we did not receive these petition, they would have been done in the next three years anyway. It's just, these property owners, one of them had expressed that they're going to be building a garage and starting to use the alley for access for the garage, and they wanted to make sure that the alley was improved. That's an unimproved alley on here, that it would be improved so they could use their future garage that they build. So, otherwise, the treatment's the same, everything is the same, it's just whether we pick it or somebody requests us to add it to the list.
And so if a petition had come in that was part of the cluster that you were working on, say, on the Eastside Hill, then that would just go into that list? You wouldn't bring it separately?
Correct. We would, these are just petitions to order me to create the engineer report that I'll submit in two weeks, but it would be already included in there. And oftentimes, we, especially in the Eastside Hill, people call up, ask if we're going to be doing, if they need to submit a petition, or if we're doing it anyway. And if it's on the list, then they will forego having the petition. But for these ones, we were concentrating in other areas instead of having, these two are fairly close to each other, so it works out well to have them as a package, but I guess it's just a way they're brought forward difference.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Then on a motion by Councilmember Weld, seconded by Councilmember Beaton, the consent agenda is moved and discussion. And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Von Hayden.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
And the consent agenda is passed. I do have two proclamations today. I would begin with the first one concerning human trafficking, and wonder if you could meet me at the podium at this time.
Ms. Merle prepares a slide presentation that we'll be just scrolling while we talk.
Okay.
It's just a way to help augment the information. So as is our custom, we do read through part of the proclamation and give us all a chance to talk about, or helps us pause and think about the topic that is of importance to you, and then you can share some information with us, too.
And the proclamation is thus: Whereas human trafficking is modern-day slavery, a practice that is in direct opposition to the principles of liberty and human rights upon which our nation was founded; and human trafficking is the fastest-growing criminal enterprise in the world today; and we acknowledge the workforce that Fierce Freedom does with government agencies, social service, and other advocacy organizations to raise awareness and educate the public regarding human trafficking; and a resolution passed by the United States Senate in June of 2007 has forever marked January 11th as the Day of Awareness and Vigilance for the countless victims of human trafficking around the globe. But the City of Eau Claire believes that more than one day should be dedicated to preventing and raising awareness of human trafficking. So therefore, the City Council does designate the entire month of January as Human Trafficking Awareness Month. And we encourage citizens to know the signs and consequences of human trafficking, to promote opposition, and to encourage support for survivors. Some words?
Thank you. At Fierce Freedom, our mission is to educate our communities of the realities of human trafficking in our hometowns. This is known as domestic human trafficking. We couldn't be more proud that the city where we work takes the issue seriously, and that is why the city proclamation is so important. Today, the City of Eau Claire stands up to communicate to those who would harm and exploit our citizens that they are not welcome here. We at Fierce Freedom would like to sincerely thank the Eau Claire City Council for making this official proclamation today. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Today, Jenny Oomquist is here for Jody Emerson, who's, is she called the Executive Director?
I'm the Executive Director. She's Public Policy and Community Relations.
Well, Jody Emerson is a person that we're familiar with, and we're glad today that you were able to help her out and step in.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Best to you. Thank you.
I have a second proclamation today regarding Martin Luther King Day and how the city has and continues to mark this important event in our community and in our nation, really. Would Selica join me? I don't usually call people by their first name, so it was a slip of the tongue. I mean, you know disrespect.
We're easy here.
We've known each other too long, maybe. So I'll take a little time, too, to read some of the words from the proclamation and give us pause to think about this important occasion in our country's history. Whereas federal, state, and local governments, Eau Claire County and the City of Eau Claire, annually observe the third Monday of January as the national holiday celebrating the birth and life of the Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. And in 1994, the U.S. Congress designated Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday as a National Day of Service to encourage all Americans to observe the day with appropriate programs. And the City Hall and related administrative offices will be closed on Monday, January 15th, to provide an opportunity for the city staff to address community service opportunities and participate in diversity training and offer in-service educational programs. All commemorating Dr. King's, or commemorating Dr. King's life is not only a tribute to his dreams and contributions to our nation, but also a reminder that every day, each of us can play a part in continuing his work. Therefore, the City Council and the citizens of Eau Claire do proclaim Monday, January 15th as Martin Luther King Day. A few words.
On the behalf of Uniting Bridges, we thank the City Council, both for this proclamation and for 18 years of support for this program. The influence of the City Council in looking forward at race relations and race bridging is so strong that the Eau Claire Area School District followed your lead last night and, for the first time, voted to make Martin Luther King Day a day of workshops and in-service in respect and ingratitude for what you have led and for how you have led us. Your support has been instrumental to the spreading of the information about racial bridging, about the civil rights movement, about the way we teach it, and about the way our community actually begins to know about it. And in this environment of racial antagonism and partisanship that has been weaponized, racism as weaponized, this kind of leadership is what we need to keep Eau Claire strong and to keep us in the lead in this state and in this country. So Uniting Bridges thanks you.
The Council then continues its work with the business agenda. Particularly, item 12 is a resolution granting a temporary Class B fermented malt beverage and wine license to the Community Table for the Informalist and Driftless Cafe for the community, for a Community Table fundraiser. Mr. Nick?
Thank you. This is the first of two temporary licenses, and this one, you should note, is a beer and wine license. I see that the agenda has it as, both of them as wine, but you'll note in the License Review Committee minutes on this item, it notes a beer and wine, and that is the resolution we'd like you to consider. This event is this Thursday, January 11th, at the Community Table. It is a fundraiser event for that organization and will be held at their facility on Putnam Street. They have a commercial kitchen, but they will be working in conjunction with other area restaurateurs to provide, again, a fundraising dinner. And what you're looking, what they're asking you to consider and to approve is a temporary beer and wine license. They will set up a temporary bar in the bar in the corner of their dining facilities that will be staffed by licensed bartenders. And the event is a ticketed event. We don't anticipate, or the event organizers don't anticipate underagers, but they will be following proper bartender protocol, including carding if anyone appears anywhere close to the legal drinking age and using clear cups. We met with the applicants and representatives are here today in the audience. Should they wish to say a few words or if you have any questions of them, there were no objections noted from the License Review Committee. Other than, again, if you could please pass an amended version of the resolution to allow them both a temporary beer and wine.
Just a point of our own clarification. On page 30, the resolution as stated grants a temporary Class B fermented malt and temporary Class B wine. Is that the correct, that's the correct resolution?
Right. As long as it says fermented, I was just looking down at the agenda and it noted just wine.
Okay.
And I've got page 30 up. So as long as the reso says both, and it looks like it does.
We're okay.
No need to amend.
Okay.
Noting the distinction. Thanks.
Sure. Okay. Questions for Mr. Nick? Does the applicant, I usually ask the applicant if you're interested in speaking about, especially if we have a new event. You don't have to, but. Sure.
So my name's Michelle Kane and I'm from the Community Table. I serve as the executive director. We actually have sold all of our tickets and to best of my knowledge, only one is underage and she's four. So otherwise, we don't intend to sell to any underage drinkers and we do have a system and a protocol in place that was recommended by the Licensing Review. So we follow that.
Good luck with your event.
Okay, thank you.
And then on a motion by Councilmember Worthman, seconded by Councilmember Strobel, item 12 is moved. Discussion? And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kincaid?
Aye.
Clinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item 13 is a resolution granting a temporary class wine license to Hope Lutheran Church for the Hope Lutheran Church Sweetheart Dinner. Again, Mr. Nick?
This is another temporary license, this time just a temporary Class B wine license, as well as a helpful reminder that Valentine's Day is just around the corner. This is an event termed the Sweetheart Dinner Event at Hope Lutheran Church. It is being held on February 11th. It is expected that they will be catering in an Italian dinner and serving a few bottles of wine. Again, mostly probably members of the congregation, although I think all are welcome. So with that, we met as a License Review Committee with Ms. Larson, went through the event, satisfied that the limited amount of wine involved will be properly secured until the event and then served by responsible individuals, two responsible individuals, and there was no concern or objection. Again, Ms. Larson and perhaps other event organizers are present if you have any questions or should they want to address counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Nick. Questions? Ms. Larson, do you wish to speak to your event? Okay. So our next action on a motion then by Councilmember Mitchell, seconded by Councilmember Von Hayden. Item 13 is moved and that opens up discussion. But there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Clinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye. And that resolution passes. Best of luck with your event also. And lastly, item 14 is a resolution granting a combination Class B liquor and fermented malt beverage license to Half Moon Saloon on Hastings Way. Mr. Nick?
Thank you. This is a surrender and transfer of a combination Class B or a full liquor license from what's presently being operated as Bug-Eyed Betty's. The surrender transfer is from the current tenant to the current owner and prior operator of the facility in prior business, you know, versions, including Broadway Pizza. Operations are expected to remain largely unchanged, other than the name change and there might be some minor menu changes. No changes in the premise or, you know, expected layout of the facility, either interior or exterior. We were told staffing will remain, you know, largely unchanged, both in the numbers and likely those at the facility. Really, the only operational change that we discussed was the addition of some additional exterior security cameras, both in the exterior patio or kind of beer garden area and then perhaps also along the parking lot side. There's also a new agent. The owner is an out-of-state, individually Tom's here, Mr. Stewart, and he was also here for license review. But because he's a Minnesota resident, he can't actually serve as agent, so it is a new agent, but someone who is a current employee at Bug-Eyed Betty's and has prior restaurant and tavern experience. So with those kind of questions that we went through with the owner, with Mr. Stewart, and wanted to get a little bit more information about the agent, but once that was provided, there were no concerns or objections by License Review. And so again, that surrender transfer is before you for consideration and Mr. Stewart is in the audience, I know. I didn't get to meet the agent, so I'm not sure if he's present or not, but Mr. Stewart's present.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Nick? There being none, on a motion by Councilmember Clinkhammer, seconded by Councilmember Weld, item 14 is moved and discussion is in order. And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Clinkhammer?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Next, we start a series of resolutions regarding some property transactions. With the first, a number 15, being a resolution authorizing the release of a utility easement related to the new plant for Autumn Birch Condominiums. Ms. Basem?
Thank you. Approved was the Clearwater Ridge Plat, which was recorded in September of 1995, which included the utility easement located on the north edge of lots 15 and 16. A new plat for Autumn Birch Condominiums was recorded in July of 2017. As part of that plat, the easement was, the easement remains, which is now located in Unit 4, right in the middle of the unit. The developer has requested the utility easement be released. Staff does not see a need to retain the utility easement. There are no current or future plans believed to need this utility easement. The resolution would authorize the release of the easement and the Plan Commission did review this request at its January 2nd meeting and it recommended approval.
Questions for Ms. Basem? See none? Thank you. On a motion by Councilmember Beaton, seconded by Councilmember Worthman, item 15 is moved. Discussion? And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Strobel?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Clinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item 16 is a resolution authorizing the city to acquire through tax deeds parcels 155469 and 155470 along Gables Drive to allow for maintenance access. Ms. Basem?
Eau Claire County has the option to take by tax deed the two parcels indicated in orange there. The lots are needed for, are required for drainage at this time. At the time the plat was approved, there was an apartment association that was supposed to be put in place to maintain the parcels. There was no means for the city to assure the association would exist to provide the maintenance and at this time it does not exist. Staff believes that it would be best for us to require these parcels now before an opportunity could be given to an outside party for purchase or to attempt to develop the properties. Back taxes and recording fees for the parcels are estimated at $9,000. The resolution would authorize staff to work with the city manager to acquire the properties through the tax deed process and this was presented to the Plan Commission at the January 2nd meeting and was recommended for approval. Any questions?
Communication has occurred or will occur regarding this action? With?
With the county, correct. Yes.
Okay. I see no questions. And on a motion by, let's see, to Councilmember Strobel, seconded by Councilmember Mitchell, item 16 is moved. Discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Von Hayden?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Clinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item 17 is a resolution declaring land at 1939 Cleveland Street and 553 Franklin Street excess land and authorizing the sale to the City of Eau Claire Housing Authority. Ms. Basem?
Okay. The city acquired 1939 Cleveland Street and 553 Franklin Street, as well as 728 Niagara Street as a part of the transitional housing program in September of 1994. 728 Niagara Street was transferred to the Housing Authority in December of 94. Staff believes that the intent was for the ownership of the remaining two parcels to be transferred to the Housing Authority at a later date. The Housing Authority has been maintaining and utilizing the properties for the transitional housing program. Staff believes that these properties, that these parcels are no longer necessary and the resolution before you would declare the properties excess land and authorize the sale to the City of Eau Claire Housing Authority for a dollar per parcel. This was brought to the Plan Commission at its January 2nd meeting and recommended for approval. And this is the Cleveland Street property with the house that they are using and the Franklin Street property. Are there any questions?
Questions for Ms. Basem? Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you. So what are the houses being used for now?
For the transitional housing program. I think it's for, what are my words? Correct. Yep. People that need assistance and.
But they're not currently owned by the Housing Authority?
Correct. They've been utilizing them and maintaining them, but currently the city owns them.
Okay. Thank you.
And I see no further questions. On a motion then by Councilmember Von Hayden, seconded by Councilmember Clinkhammer, item 17 is moved. Discussion? Councilmember Weld? Oh, okay. Yep. Seeing no discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Clinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item 18 is a resolution declaring some vacant land on Abbey Hill Drive as excess land. Ms. Basem?
In 1991, the city acquired property along Abbey Hill Drive to connect Diane Lane and Abbey Hill Drive to create what is now known as Mandy Lane. The city used the land necessary for the construction of the Mandy Lane and leaving the remnant parcel, the two splits here. Staff believes that these parcels are no longer necessary. The resolution would declare the parcel excess land and authorize this, well, not authorize the sale, but declare excess land for the potential to sale. The Plan Commission reviewed this at its January 2nd meeting and recommended for approval.
Questions? Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. Was there interest from neighbors to potentially buy this land?
I, we have not reached out to the neighbors yet at this time, but that is our intent.
Thank you.
Looks like we're doing some hard and detailed work about our land.
Correct.
Inventory. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
On a motion then by Councilmember Weld, seconded by Councilmember Beaton, item 18 is moved. Discussion? And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Clinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Lastly, item 19 is a resolution authorizing the transfer of parcels within the Canary Redevelopment District between the City of Eau Claire and the Redevelopment Authority. And Ms. Basem?
Can you make this? Ted, please? Can it go out a little? Can you go out? Thank you. Okay. The Canary Trail, there was a trail created in the Canary District. Portions of the trail located within that trail are deeded to the Redevelopment Authority. The city is requesting a land transfer beginning five feet to the west of the trail and extending to the river. So we would acquire five feet to the west of the trail over to the river on these parcels here. In exchange, the city owns two additional parcels down here in the Canary District that the Redevelopment Authority would like to acquire for potential future development. There are not, there's nobody currently interested in the properties, but they would like the option to, to reach out to people. There is no fee being proposed for the land transfer and the resolution would authorize the transfer of land between the city and the Redevelopment Authority. The Plan Commission reviewed this at its January 2nd meeting and approved the recommendation.
Questions? Councilmember Von Hayden?
Just on the two properties we'd be transferring to the Redevelopment Authority, it's only the land to the,
Correct.
away from the other side of the trail, not the land from the trail.
Yeah, we would still maintain the five feet to the west and all the way over.
Okay. Thank you.
And I see no further questions. Thank you for your work tonight.
Thank you.
And on a motion then by Councilmember Worthman, seconded by Councilmember Strobel, item 19 is moved. Discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Clinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. We move into ordinances for the evening, of which we have four. The first, item 20, is an ordinance rezoning property on the north side of Westover, west of State, from R1 to R1P and to adopt a general development plan. As we learned last night, the applicant withdrew this development application. Mr. Nick has some, has a suggestion for what might be appropriate action on the council's part. Mr. Nick?
Thank you. There is a withdrawal. At times, council will consider a motion to postpone indefinitely. While that isn't illegal or inappropriate, my suggestion on this one would be to actually take it up and take action on it presumably to deny it based on the developer's withdrawal and the protest petition. Reason I would suggest actually taking action and presumably defeating the item is because there is a valid protest petition and to make clear that the item that that attached to is acted upon. And also because staff, you know, has taken the position concurred upon by Plan Commission that this present development does not meet with city code. So the recommendation would be to take action and that action within, of course, your choice, but recommendation is for denial.
Okay. So just as our custom, the chair will move the item, a motion by Councilmember Mitchell and seconded by Councilmember Von Hayden. So the item is now before us and questions are in order.
Just a clarification on the three force vote, is that? Just a clarification on the three-fourths vote. Is that three-fourths of the members present, or three-fourths of the council?
It would take three-fourths of those present in voting to pass, to vote in the affirmative in the face of a protest petition. So, just to keep us all on our toes, this is, most of them are based on all members. So, usually, you'll see those two-thirds, and it's always set at eight. Protest petitions are three-fourths, but of those present in voting. Keeps me in business.
The chair would entertain any other discussion, if there being any? Councilmember Mitchell?
Thank you. I'll be voting no on this resolution, and I want to say, in response to the comments last night by the developer that they wanted some time to go back and work with the neighbors and find something that's acceptable to them, I just want to be sure that everybody understands that with or without the neighbors, there were a lot of problems with this development. The street is too narrow, it's not a city street, the setbacks are too small, there's not enough green space, there's no parking, the, it's a private drive, as I said, there is no room to put snow. There are a lot of problems with this development that the neighbors alone will not satisfy, and I would just encourage the developers to also be working with the city planners, so as to have a successful project when it comes back through Plan Commission and council.
Councilmember Von Hayden?
Yeah. I would just like to concur with Councilmember Mitchell, and also just to thank the people that came in. It's important that when developments like this come forward, they are properly looked at. And also, I'd like to thank the developer for listening to the citizens and pulling his motion back and saying he will sit down and talk to the people to come up with a viable, and hopefully, will talk to the staff to come up with a viable development that fits our regulations. But I will vote no on the issue as it stands.
And further discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kincaid?
No.
Clinkhammer?
No.
Mitchell?
No.
Strobel?
No.
Von Hayden?
No.
Weld?
No.
Worthman?
No.
Beaton?
No.
And that ordinance is denied. A rezoning ordinance. Item 21 is an ordinance rezoning property at 83 Grover Road from TR-1A to R1. We had a presentation on this, a public hearing on this rezoning request. Any questions for Mr. Tufti? On a motion then by Councilmember Clinkhammer, seconded by Councilmember Weld, item 21 is moved, and discussion is in order. And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Clinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye. And that ordinance is adopted. And item 22 is an ordinance rezoning property at the southwest corner of Mount Washington and Menominee Street from TR-1A to R1. Also a public hearing last evening. Any lingering questions? Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. I believe these would be for Mr. Tufti. Mr. Tufti, last night, it was touched upon the lighting for the parking lot and the proximity to the homes. I sort of know that neighborhood a little bit, but is, was there any concerns in terms of just the lighting and the proximity to homes and how that might impact folks at night?
The conditional use permit approved by the Plan Commission for the parking lot requires they submit a more detailed site plan that properly landscapes the parking lot to buffer its appearance from the neighbors, and that the lighting meets city standards, which means they're fully shielded fixtures that focus their glare downwards.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tufti. On a motion then by Councilmember Beaton, seconded by Councilmember Worthman, item 22 is moved. Discussion? And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Clinkhammer?
Aye.
And that ordinance is adopted. Finally, tonight, before our work session, we have an ordinance amending the zoning code for the splitting of two family residential lots by adding a joint cross-access maintenance agreement. Does anyone have questions about this item from last evening? And on a motion by Councilmember Strobel, seconded by Councilmember Mitchell, item 23 is moved, and discussion is in order. And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Strobel?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Clinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
And that ordinance is adopted. Announcements are then in order. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam President. A couple of announcements. Tomorrow morning is the Volunteer Appreciation Breakfast at Hobbs at 7:30. So, if you have not signed up, I hope that you, I'm sure we could probably accommodate you, right, if you came, but hopefully, we'll see you tomorrow morning at 7:30. As was mentioned earlier, next Monday will be closed. City Hall will be closed as we do some internal training and education of staff on Martin Luther King Day. Then Friday, the 19th, is the Eggs and Issue Presentation of the State of the County. Then Wednesday, the 31st, is the Chippewa Valley Rally. It's a big, important day. It's a long day, and if you have not signed up or participated in that, I would encourage you to consider that as an effort to have, you know, leadership and people from the community go down to Madison and talk about issues that are relative to the Chippewa Valley. And then finally, on the 16th of February, will be the State of the City. So, you might want to put that on your calendar about a month from now. That's all I have. Thanks.
Announcements by councilmembers. And there being no further business to come before this body, on a motion by Councilmember Von Hayden, seconded by Councilmember Clinkhammer, we adjourn without objection.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the City of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call 715-839-4912, or TDD 715-839-1689, or write Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box 5148, Eau Claire, Wisconsin 54702-5148. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org.